Yeah, I just got this. There's many small. What fun you're gonna. So, all right. Did I fix yours?
Yeah. That was an extra one anyway.
Feel better?
Yeah, still driving. Last evening meeting for the year. Absolutely. Uh, that's the first.
Good evening. Good, thank you. Good evening.
So, how to make that.
So, with the we. That, that, so this would be. We could replace this one.
One good trip.
One little trip. One little trip.
In Spain.
Yes.
You got your phone? Over to zero dot com. Okay. And then put that address. And see that. So you can put that address in to a. To our, to a. And get an estimated quote. Mayor freaks. Check that out. If anyone see a big guy. So this what we doing, buddy? Is this what we doing?
What we doing?
Beer in the winter time. Smooth in the summer.
I try to be like you. I'm trying to back you up.
I, I wear this all year round.
No, I'm fake. Oh, yeah. Did you hang out with your brother? I mean, fresh. So you, you're a brother.
Um.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to invite you to the last. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to invite you to the last city council meeting of the year in the city of Highland Park for today. Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. For our opening ceremonies, we are very fortunate enough to have two new officers joining us today, and I will turn over the floor to our police chief to help us welcome these new officers into the Highland Park family. Chief, show is yours.
Good evening.
So.
Open a ceremony.
All right, so um, we have two new officers that are, uh, reserve officers that are getting sworn into our department today. But there's actually five officers here today, and the reason for that is three of our officers who have been with us. Well, two of them for nearly a decade went through an academy. But it wasn't actually an accredited academy, so we've raised our standards. And we now require that all of our reserves, um, attend and police officers attend an accredited academy. So these officers, like I said, they've been with us for almost a decade or over a decade. They just went to the most recent class as well, so I wanted to introduce those officers first. Khalid.
Halawi, sir. This officer Halawi, uh, like I said, he's been with us over ten years. Huge asset to the department. Glad to have him on and congratulations.
All right, this officer Huda, he's done with us in excess of ten years.
Nice, nice.
And we have a new chaplain that's joining us, Eric Lloyd. He went through the, uh, went through the academy. He was the, uh, class president. Represented, uh, Island Park, uh, very well, and you guys may know his face. He's on, he's around town, uh, in, in the community. Always doing stuff. So I'll let him speak for a minute as class president.
Absolutely. Hopefully, we represented Highland Park well. Uh, in addition to being the class president, I was, uh, afforded the honor to do the commencement speech. And, um, Highland Park was the talk of the class, and we are grateful for all of our cadets. Thankful for our chief, thankful for the mayor and city council giving us this opportunity, and, um, hopefully we made you proud. God bless.
And, uh, I also want to say, uh, two of our other officers held positions as well. Officer Huda was a secretary and Officer Parrish was treasurer. So we held, uh, Highland Park held three positions in this academy, which is, uh, which is great. And, uh, you know, it's good to have some positive feedback out there about the police department, the city alone. So I'm excited about that. So our two newest officers, Austin Parrish.
Stand up here. Uh, we got some business to take care of. And Kenneth Glenn, junior.
All right, I'm gonna ask you guys to come on the other side because your family wants to see your beautiful faces. That way you'll be facing the camera.
Raise your right hand or you can ask me. I, and Eric, your name.
I, I'm first.
I, Kenneth Glenn.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution, United States.
I would support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Highland Park City Charter.
The Highland Park City Charter.
And I will discharge the duties.
I would discharge the duties.
As a reserve officer.
As a reserve officer.
For the city of Highland Park.
As the city of Highland Park.
To the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen. You definitely need it here.
Thank you, council, as usual, for giving us this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Well, we got supporters. So we got a lot of supporters. I'll take up the whole meeting.
Appreciate.
I appreciate you guys being out there. All that blue. I like blue.
No kidding. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Careful, careful.
I know.
Yeah. Careful.
Well, we just got a few more minutes. There are some agendas on the, uh, front pew, guys, if anyone out there needs an agenda.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you will be kind enough to call the roll for tonight's meeting, we'll go ahead and kick it off.
Councilman Shafi.
Press it.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
President.
Council President Thomas.
Here, moving on to item three, this is the approval of the agenda. I will, uh, give members a minute to, uh, take a look at the agenda and prepare any recommendations that they have. And then, at which time you're ready, the chair will entertain a motion for approval.
There is a walk on.
Yes.
The council president.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Botsick.
Is there a place we want to place that?
Yes, I do. Hold on just a second, but, um, were you about to address that for us?
Yes, yes, there are two, um, modifications. We received a communication from Director Clyburn asking that item V I, the community development item be pulled. He's going to put it on the next agenda. He's gonna make a couple of changes to the resolution, and he, um, wants to provide additional documentation to support that item. So he's asking that the community development item be pulled. And then we're walking on item, um, the resolution to solicit proposals to rehabilitate the temporary detention facility. That is a police department item, so that would be on the agenda as seven B. And the original police resolution regarding an interagency would be, uh, item seven A. Thank you.
Okay, and I, I also have a copy in my hand. There was a recommendation from a member to modify this resolution that we were proposing. And I'm in complete support of that modification. Uh, I think it goes as far, I think it goes far enough at the end of that sentence. Uh, members, if you would be open to making a motion on these modifications, the chair will entertain it.
I'll tell you, um, council president.
Yes, sir.
I support modifications.
So would you, um, would you want to take the lead and make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, I moved to approve the modifications.
So Mr. Shafi has made a motion to approve the agenda with the, with support, and let's make sure that we spell it out, Mr. Shafi, could you?
Okay. So, so the modifications to the agenda is we will be pulling, uh, item six, uh, community development. And, uh, we will be walking on, uh, um, item. What item number would this be?
Seven B.
No.
Would it be six?
I'm sorry.
Six B, because we took out six.
Yep, so it'll be six B.
Okay, six B, okay, and we'll be, uh, right, and we'll be, um, we'll be, uh, uh, walking on, uh, six B with a, with a, a modification that the last, uh, sentence, uh, on the last paragraph, now there be a resolve. The city approves the solicitation of qualified proposals, uh, striking out to be paid for from the police department's budget and general fund. That line should be stricken from the, um, from this, uh, this resolution.
Yes, sir, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Shafi to approve tonight's agenda with the modification of removing the item from community development. This is a resolution to approve the sale of a commercial building at one, three, eight, four, seven Woolworth. That item is to be removed, bringing the police matters up from item, uh, seven to item six and adding on the resolution to solicit proposals to rehabilitate the temporary detention facility. Modifying that resolution in the final, now therefore be a resolve, the city approves the solicitation of qualified proposals only. Removing to be paid for from the police department budget and general fund. That motion was seconded by Councilwoman Martin. Deputy Clerk, would you please, we have questions, concerns, dissent? Hearing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on the modified agenda?
Councilman Shafi.
Yes, to modify.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council, uh, Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. The new agenda will have item six as a police affairs with a A and a B uh, item, so we can move from there to the approval of the proposed minutes, the in-person and regular virtual meeting held on December second, twenty twenty four.
I moved to approve the.
Well, that was approval of the agenda with the modification.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
Move to approve the proposed minutes from the in-person and virtual regular meeting held December second, two thousand and twenty four.
We have a motion made to approve the in-person and virtual regular meeting to the December second meeting made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Questions, concerns, or dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on item four?
Councilman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, moving on to the section of our meeting, every meeting where we save time for the mayor to address the public. Madam Mayor, do we have you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, can we get, well, we, I think we can all hear you.
Okay, good. Please forgive me.
Get a little bit of volume on it. I don't know where the remote is. Just one second, ma'am, I want to make sure that the gallery can hear you. Yeah, just shy a high, because the high it starts to get a little. Madam Mayor, could you go ahead and, um, give us a sound check?
That's thing.
That's good, that's good, thank you. Okay, go right ahead, ma'am.
Uh, good evening, uh, council. Good evening, citizens. Good evening, administration. Please forgive me for not being there right before the meeting. I got a call that, and I had to rush down to the hospital, um, with that, we have a family matter. So I'm gonna make this pretty brief, so I can get back to it. Keep my, keep, keep my family in prayer, please. I want to thank all of the, the seniors and the volunteers and the staff that helped put on a wonderful, wonderful, um, senior holiday party. We had about a hundred people, um, and that was very good. So I want to thank everybody who came out. I want to thank, like I said, my volunteers who showed up and helped, all of the resources that was, uh, came out. And, uh, we're gonna continue to move forward. Stay tuned for this, uh, Valentine's Day, and we'll be having something then. I also want to take time to congratulate those officers, reserve officers who were just sworn in, as well as those who are, uh, the chaplain and all the rest that, uh, came up today. City is, is very proud to have you, and we welcome you, so congratulations. I want to give a, just a, a, a brief update on some of the things that we are going, we're moving forward. Come January, we will be rebranding, and so stay tuned for that. There's gonna be a lot going on with that, so I hope you guys stay tuned and listen and watch your, watch your emails, watch your text messages. We're gonna be, uh, changing the way we do the calendar starting for January. Instead of a calendar, it'd be a news alert, so a lot of changes are gonna happen. So I think that's all I got right now, and I appreciate your time. You guys, uh, just keep me, keep my family lifted in prayer, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the section that is, uh, set aside for citizen participation. We really only have two items tonight, so if there's anybody that wanted to come to the podium to speak about the opening bids for the Water Master Meter Project or the resolution to establish an interagency agreement between the city of Detroit Police Department and the city of Highland Park Police Department for information exchange and use and/or related to this resolution about the detention facility. Now is an opportunity for you to come up and get your two minutes. Otherwise, we can save all other comments for the end of the meeting. Do we have anyone that wanted to address something specifically on the agenda? Seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and move right into our agenda. That is item five, the bid openings for the twenty twenty four Water Master Meter Project. Would that, would you have those bids, miss?
We have one bid.
We have one bid, let's get it open. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, uh, members of council, I need to get a motion to open the bids, so if we can get a motion from a member of council, we'll go ahead and get that single bid. I'm sorry. We have a motion from Councilman Shafi to begin the, uh, bid opening seconded by, you Miss Manica?
Yes.
Okay, so made by Councilman Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica, if you will call the roll on the bid.
Councilman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. If you will, ma'am.
We have one bid from L G C Global Incorporated.
Why are you opening those? Is the bidding process still open or is it closed?
It's closed.
It's closed.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at this here, uh, did we have that, uh, that, that Monday, December second, uh, pre-bid meeting? I'm looking at this here. Uh, did we have that, uh, that, that Monday, December 2nd, uh, pre-bid meeting? It says here, a mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held on Monday, December 2nd, 11:00 a.m., local time, online at, uh, uh, and at the, uh, following address, which is here at, at City Hall. Do we have that meeting?
Can you, we have that meeting? Yes.
But the, uh, the in-person was at water.
Okay. It was attended by the bid dirr that we have here?
Yes, by all of the respective business.
Okay. Would you mind, do you recall how many people we had there?
Two, two contractors.
Okay. And some subs, okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Garrett, Mr. Shafi?
No, sir, I do not. Just here, it's about the meeting, I'm looking at the paperwork.
They gave a lump sum bid price of $3,878,000.
One more time? How many meters?
Three.
Three, okay. Okay.
Um, that's gonna be on Hamilton Avenue and McNichols Road, John R. Street and McNichols Road and Hamilton Avenue and Webb. I didn't know that so much was running underneath Hamilton.
Questions, concerns, comments, members of council, we can move on.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I asked, um, why was it going Webb Street? And that's not how it's right.
The exit, I believe.
Good evening, council and residents. What, what, what did you say?
When I asked you how the park is not webbed, I was just wondering, can you explain why or where?
Seventy.
Absolutely. So the, uh, the actual water main itself is in that particular location. That's why we're making a connection there.
And Mr. Garrett, that is the end of the line, right? Anything that comes out of there can only be from us, correct?
Yes, in the line. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. It's actually a pretty good place. They can't say what we didn't have, if we got it right at the door.
So, so up at the, uh, the water department?
No, no, no meter at the water department.
Are these, uh, the emergency spots?
These will be the new permanent locations.
Okay, okay, new permanent locations, okay. Where are the, uh, the temporary, uh, the emergency spots currently at that we're?
Uh, um, well, currently, we're being fed out of McNichols, which is quote unquote, an emergency spot.
Okay.
Uh, and, and Webb.
Okay.
And that's, that's it right now.
Okay.
Okay. So this is fresh water coming in?
The, yes, this will be, I mean, it's, so one of the locations is where we're getting water from now, but it's un-metered. So we're
What location?
The, Hamilton and McNichols.
And where does that work come from?
It's come from, uh, Detroit GLWA. That's Great Lakes Water Authority.
And where is our sewage going?
Our soup, I'm sorry?
Didn't y'all just mention an exit and where, the Council President?
That's the, so if I'm, tell me if I'm right or wrong. North to south, that meter, that's water coming out of the city, the one on Webb? Or is that water coming into the city?
It is coming into the city.
We've got three entry points.
We will have three entry points, yes, with these three meter locations. Two on Hamilton, one at Webb, one at McNichols, and one on John R. McNichols. That's the third location.
So we have three meters. Will there be any more meters?
No, that'll be it.
So this water is coming straight from a river or compensation or?
This water is coming from the treatment plants being treated, and then it's being delivered in the, uh, in the pipe to Highland Park, same way we're getting water right now.
I thought we were gonna have more than three meters.
No, just three. We have more than that right now, uh, what they're closed, but just three.
So we're not even utilizing, we're not gonna utilize the ones that we already have?
No, those will be, no.
Are those getting removed?
No, they're not getting removed. They'll be, uh, cut and capped.
So all we ever needed was our meters updated?
No, we didn't. So, okay, so let me, let me backtrack a little bit. So we have valves.
Right.
And we don't actually have meters. We have valves that were open and closed. So now we're actually having a, a meter and a valve. So before, we just had, you know, a bunch of valves that were around with connections coming into the city. Those other four or five have been closed. The valves have been shut. Our current Webb and Hamilton and McNichols are open, but they're open un-metered. So there is no meter water, just is coming into the city, and that was what the dispute was about, about how much water is coming into the city. So now what's happening with this is where those valves are, we're gonna put these meters in the ground at those locations, and then the water's gonna come through the valve and go through the meter and get measured. And then we'll know exactly how much water we're using. And that's what, that's what's going on now.
Okay, um, question. The spots in which you're gonna cut and cap, are we gonna need those spots in the future? Because I'm pretty sure this city is gonna get a hell of a lot bigger real soon.
So, um, there, no, I do not anticipate that right now, uh, but it, they are being cut and capped, so you can reconnect
Okay.
in the future if needed.
Okay.
But when we, um, when, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority and our department and the third-party consultant went through the modeling process, we had to model all these different scenarios. So we modeled today, the current scenario, and then we had to model out about 10 years. So we put future, the build out into that model, or it was put in and we were able to evaluate that. So we looked, we looked into the future, we looked into now and looked into the future, and the data that I have right now says that these three locations will be sufficient for Highland Park.
Okay, I have one little question.
Sure.
Are we getting any water from the pumping station?
No, not, no, we're not.
But one day, can you have a workshop or reading and update us on that pumping station?
On the, on the original one that we have. Yeah, sure, why not?
So I think part of the, I'm sorry, I think part of the question is, there's only three meters. There's no meters should be on Woolworth, none on Oakland, none, you know. Were there any there? So what is, it just sounds so small. And it sounds like they're all in one place, like we're just getting it in one place. It, the water comes from the other side of the world.
Okay, so, um, you know, we are three square miles, so we're not, we're not huge.
Three.
We're not huge. Um, but I think what's, um, confusing is the connections versus the meters. And a lot of communities that are, um, you know, similar size or larger than Highland Park just have one location, one meter that services 20,000 people. So I know it seems like we had all those connections because all of those water mains are running through Highland Park, being kind of in the middle of Detroit, right? So that really wasn't something that we needed to do, that needed to, that we needed to have. So I know, so because we've had the history behind all of that, it seems like, why do we have all of those and go down to none? What's going on? Well, um, for the way that we are today and the way we're gonna be in the future, these three locations, um, will, will take care of us.
Mr. Garrett, I want to, uh, I see, Ms. Garrett, just, if there's something that we could do in the future, if there, and I know it exists. I worked with a guy who used to be an engineer at Gleeva, who did maps. And I was talking about our city. He said, you know, there's a map of water infrastructure for a city. I don't know if that's, you're the engineer, so I'm not gonna get in your lane. But if there is a way that you could get us an illustration, if it's available.
Well, you know, we have maps.
I was just saying, so if you could show that, if you, if, because I think that would answer a lot of questions. As I listened to you say that, I was thinking about centerline, which is surrounded on all sides by another city, Hamtramck. Um, the borders above ground are are, they're almost artificial when it comes to underground infrastructure. They connect it however they need to connect it. Am I correct? When, because when I see them doing roadwork and they're connecting those underground pipes, they go where the map underground is. I don't think they care about the above ground. Otherwise, our, you know, our state tree is the orange barrel right now. So it's everywhere. And so am I right in assuming that that path is pre-decided based on the map's underground?
Um, we, we can get you a map of, of what our city looks like.
That would be great.
And then, you know, meters and things are located at all different locations for different reasons. Um, generally, they're at the boundary. Um, so where there's a jurisdictional, uh, difference between community A and community B, generally, that's where they're located. But there are situations when they can be located internal, and that gets into some of the subsurface piping that you're talking about in the configuration. So in theory,
It's educational for us.
The, the boundaries is, to keep it simple, is normally where you would put, place that kind of infrastructure. But there are cities and scenarios where it's, it varies.
Okay. Ms. Square, you wanted to add to that? I see, Ms. Shafi.
I, I think one, one of the messaging problems we have is that the residents are confused about meters. What we're putting in, they're not meters, they're master meters. And, and we need to call them master meters. It's a master meter. It's a big giant master meter that will be put into a vault in the ground. Unlike the meters that are in your house. So I noticed that when we had, um, uh, some news coverage maybe six weeks ago, where residents thought that they were getting new meters. So thi- this, we opened bids tonight for master meters. Cam Tramick has one. Comes in on Colin. Comes from Water Works Park, Councilman Robinson, Councilwoman Robinson asked where the water was coming from. I believe our water comes from Water Works Park down on Jefferson. Uh, so that's, it's, it's the language we're using. So this is, these will be master meters. And $3 million seems like awful lot of money. Uh, I know that the state has put aside $5 million. But these are mechanical rooms, vaults that are going in the ground. Uh, not just the emergency meter that they put on, or they put those, those cleansing meters on in the ground that they ended up having to take out when the water plant was shut down. So I just, you know, it's a master meter. If, unlike the meters that are in the homes and in the
If you can imagine like a construction drop trailer, like a big lunchbox?
Yeah.
A big A lunchbox in the ground is what she's referring to. It's enough room for you to get around and walk around inside of that.
Oh, wow.
So that, yeah, so when she, when you say master meter, it's, it's, you know, 12 feet by six feet, and it's, you know, in the ground, and it's got a the, the water main comes in and the master meter's sitting on a big platform right there, and there's fans and, uh, electrical stuff in there, and then the, the pipe goes out. But it's, it's like a big lunchbox in the ground. It's not, you know, a little, a little guy, a little meter. It's a, it's a, it's a big room underground, basically.
Okay. Additional questions before we move on? Go ahead, Mr. Shafi.
Okay, so, um, um, I guess, uh, I guess me and Council President, we shared, sharing the brain tonight, because I was definitely gonna ask about that map.
Okay.
Uh, uh, please make sure that it's legible so we can see it. And if possible, if possible, which I think it is, I think it should be, but if possible, if you could give us a list uh, of every single pumping station that is owned by this city, inside this city and outside this city, because it's quite a few. I found some, but I'm pretty sure it's more out there.
Yeah, um, so we can show you the map.
Okay.
We can show you the existing connections that are, you know, gonna be cut and capped in the future, so you see those. And then we can make those, make the proposed master meter locations larger, so you won't get those confused with the other ones. But we'll show the, uh, as much infrastructure as we can on the map, so that you can, everybody can have an idea of what we're talking about in its entirety, how what we're talking about today, uh, pertains to the rest of the city. We can do that for you.
I appreciate it, because it'll probably answer questions that may arise in the future. And I do thank you so much for your time, Mr. Garrett. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So now we can entertain a motion to refer this bid to the administration?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Shafi to refer the bids to the administration, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. If we could go ahead and call to roll quickly on that?
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item six under police, this is a resolution to establish an interagency agreement between the City of Detroit Police Department and the City of Highland Park Police Department.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. We're at six B, Council President.
Sorry, say it again?
We're at six B.
No, we, we're at six A.
Six A.
Six A.
Which is a resolution to establish an interagency agreement. So six A is that resolution, six B is the detention facility.
I thought we moved, yeah, I, I thought we got rid of, uh,
We got rid of community development.
Right, and I thought we put that, uh, put this one here in its place as six B.
When we take it out, it takes the number, the next one takes that previous number.
Yes, it's under police too. That one, so we couldn't take, we couldn't put it at six B under community development, because it was an item for police. So community development, that's just So it's still, yeah, it's, it says seven on the sheet, because it was prepared for us to send.
Okay.
So we just need to strike one of those eyes.
Okay.
And this will be six, the, the resolution for the interagency is six A, and this one will be six B.
Got it.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion on, uh, item six A, resolution to establish an interagency agreement between the City of Detroit Police Department and City of Highland Park Police Department for information exchange and use.
So moved with questions?
We have a motion on the floor for the approval of the resolution made by Councilman Shafi, supported by Councilwoman Manica. Mr. Shafi, the floor is yours.
Uh, Chief, can you explain this one to me?
Yeah, so we're entering, we're, we're attempting to enter into an agreement with, uh, the City of Detroit to share images from LPR cameras, our license play reading cameras. We currently share with numerous other agencies in the state, and actually in the country, other agencies share with us. However, Detroit requires an MOU, um, to share their information, and they, it's my understanding they're very selective on on the communities that they share that information with. So, um, we've been privileged enough to receive that information, because they have a, uh, a large, um, capacity of cameras, uh, throughout the City of Detroit, as well as, um, they're looking to expand onto the freeways as well. Um, so it could be great information for us.
Back to you.
So typically, what, what it does is it lists wanted individuals, stolen vehicles, things like that. Um, we don't use that as the sole source for an arrest. It's just, um, it's a guidance, puts us in the right direction, basically. So we confirm all the information that we receive, and sometimes it is not accurate. Sometimes there's duplicate plates from other states. So we have to verify all that information before we make a move on it.
And that's just being able to talk with the City of Detroit, with the exchange of that information, correct?
Yeah, so we really wouldn't talk with the City of Detroit. They would allow us access to the, view their cameras. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Been a member of spot crime for probably about maybe eight years. And, um, do you have anything like that in Highland Park, uh, updating this home, different stuff like crimes in our area?
Well, so we, we, we're working on it. We, um, we're actually in the process of trying to get something off the ground, like a mass communication um, system to where we can, um, we can put things out on, through text to, to numbers in the, in the immediate area, um, for, you know, God forbid, there was an active shooter or something along those lines, or um, even if something, you know, like, um, traffic accident, maybe detour, things like that. So we are working on it. Um, we don't have it up and running currently.
Direct line that folks can actually call if a crime is made, we have a number.
Well, as always, they can Yeah, I mean, so as always, for an emergency, 911 is, is the answer. But, um, the direct number to our patrol desk is 313-852-7338, and you would select prompt two. Yep.
Additional questions before we take a vote?
Yeah, I do, I have one.
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
How would this be used, like, for example, this morning, there was like three cars broken where I live? Would that system be used in any way, one of those cars?
So potentially it could. So let's say hypothetically, those three cars were broken, and there was an eyewitness, and they said, hey, we have, you know, our suspect is a, a red pickup truck. You know, maybe they provide a model, or the more information they give us, the better. So we can put some of that information in, and it'll, it'll select a pool of people who, who came through the city. So we can put some of that information in and it'll, it'll select a pool of people who, who came through the city. Um, and, uh, you know, eventually we can utilize that information to help us. Um, you know, whether it's make and model or whether it's, um, you know, actual license plate data.
All right, Madam Deputy Clerk, um, could you go ahead and call the role on item six A? That's a resolution to establish an inter-agency agreement between the City of Detroit Police Department and the City of Highland Park Police Department.
Councilman O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item six B, this is the resolution to solicit proposals to rehabilitate the temporary detention facility.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve made by Councilman O'Shafi. Do we have support? Support offered by Councilwoman Martin. Do you have questions, concerns, dissent? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and ask for the role on item six B.
Council.
I'm sorry, hold on just a second.
Where is this? We have a police station in the ballpark.
No, so our current facility, um, detention facility is behind the police station. However, the, the location that we're proposing would be at one three two three three Hamilton.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you will call the role on item six B?
Councilman O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. Well, thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, there is only two things standing between me wrapping that gavel. That is citizen participation and council affairs. So I'm gonna pull up my timer. I'm gonna start with the people online. If there are people online who would like to be heard. If you will be kind enough to raise your hand online. I see eight people online. If I don't see any hands, I will move to those in the gallery. I don't see any hands for attendees online. I actually had a couple of people drop off. I see. So we're gonna move to the gallery. If the individual would like to speak, if you don't mind coming up to the podium so that you can address the council and the citizens who are at home. Yes, sir. Come right here. You will be so kind enough to state your name and I'll start your time after that.
Uh, my name is Derek F. Hale and I'm representing, uh, County Commissioner Martha G. Scott.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to, uh, wish holiday greetings to the council and everyone, and all the citizens of the, uh, great city of Highland Park. And also I just wanted to let you know that we do have our holiday calendars available for you in, in the lobby.
All right.
Yes, I bring you one, Madam Council.
We're, we're working on it. We should have those shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Come on up, sir. Mind introducing yourself? I hate to start.
Sidney Spike, Parker Pride Foundation. Wanna thank council. Uh, definitely want to thank you, Mr. Shafi. You showed up to our Christmas event. That was real admiration of you, man. And stayed for quite some time.
Yes, sir. It was very nice.
Thank you very much. Uh, we put a lot of work in this and a lot of money and resources in this to try to pull a city together. And do some things that, uh, we get very commencement of, you know, i- i- it, sometimes it hurts when, you know, me and the mayor, well, the city, we all was partners in this. And I haven't heard no one say, thank you, Parker Pride Foundation Rehab Highland Park for putting this, this event on for our city. We don't live here, but we come back and give back. We love this city. We got a lot of stuff up the pipeline to do to try to pull us together, get the citizens out entertained for free. And try to really, really, uh, bring what we're known for. We're polar bears. We're Highland Parkers. A lot of people don't understand that. A lot of people don't know what this symbol on my back is, but a real parker can, they can make it out. It's H and a P. They don't see that from other cities. What is that? Man, I can't make it out. Parker walk up, that's H and a P. It's, it's made that way. We just wanna thank everybody for coming out. We gave every kid to show up a toy. We wanna thank our sponsors. We wanna thank the City of Highland Park as a partner. We have Highland Park as partners. We pulled out one of the, uh, the mayor found a, uh, a needy family that needed a Christmas. We gave him a, 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 a nice uh, uh, sum of money as well as toys and clothes for their kids. You know, we really, uh, wanna thank the police. You guys showed up, man. The toys y'all gave us. It was, it was, it was crazy. The, uh, uh, Sergeant, what Smith was his last name? She pulled up with three, three big bags full of toys for these kids, you know? Uh, my, uh, other sponsor, y'all don't like him, but he looks out. Nor, he's trying to open up a dispensary down here. That's between him and you guys. But he called me, said, Sid, you're doing something real nice for these kids in Highland Park. Me and Highland Park don't get along, but I'm finna give you a large sum of money. And he did. He really rescued everything we needed. And I wanna thank him, uh, um, I wanna thank Tom Hardeman. You know, uh, he really did a wonderful job in sponsoring. Uh, I mean, it, it, it was crazy how everybody called to chip in, to come, Ms. Madison. She gave me $26. I said, what's 26? She came to my job. She said, I wanna help. I wanna be involved. I said, wow. And I'm gonna borrow a chip of mine. She really stepped up, you know? It's, i- it's crazy, but Highland Park, we love you guys. Once again, we wanna thank all the sponsors, all the citizens' participations. I wish all you guys would have showed up. We needed someone to help pass these toys out. Community was there. They got toy. We got, we brought toys home. I got a trailer full of toys that we're gonna do for the parade. We're gonna try to put a festival on and give them away. You know, uh, Merry Christmas, Parker Pride Foundation. Thank you guys for supporting us and next year, really step up and step out. And thank you, Mayor for, uh, saying thank you, Parker Pride Alumni, uh, Foundation, as well as Rehab Highland Park for being a partner. You guys rock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizens? Okay, that means we're moving into council affairs on our last meeting. We're gonna kick it off with the council from the third district, Mr. O'Shafi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I simply just wanna say it's the end of the year. And you all have a blessed and beautiful holiday, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I'll look forward to be back here in your presence and your glare and your gaze on the 21st of January. Thank you.
Hello, citizens and residents and people of Highland Park. Um, I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight. Um, I am just excited about a lot of the things that happen with the police department. You know, having new people come and new police officers, that's exciting. Um, that to me is like evidence that Highland Park is, we're creating change, we're moving in a, we're moving forward. You know, I look forward to see what 2025 is gonna bring, especially since 2024 almost took me out. Um, you know, just to think Joe Louis, I'm excited about that coming. Um, and then with Parker Pride, you know, I've always been proud of what you guys do. Um, fortunately, I'm a Grinch when it comes to Christmas. I'm, I've fully, my kids know that. We watch Grinch every year. Every year I make them watch the Grinch. They say they don't mind. We watched the movie and the cartoon. Um, I'm not a Scrooge, but I am a Grinch. Um, with that being said, um, I'm always love what you do. You know, my time, my energy is always spent at that parade and that's where all my energy goes with that. Um, I just don't have all the energy for Christmas and it's always been like that for me. Um, with that being said, I can't wait to see what we're all gonna create in 2025. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn that over to Manica and I'm gonna say happy holidays to you guys and see you next year.
Thank you, Grinch. I appreciate that. All right. I seen that. I didn't wanna say anything. Uh, Mr. Lackey, am I, you can hear me, I'm speaking loud in front. Okay, great. Season's greetings to everyone. To an incredible city without you, talents and teamwork and tenacity. Um, is what you show and what we have. We have had a successful year. It may not seem that way to some, but we have. We have had a very successful year in many aspects. Everyone take some well-deserved rest. Enjoy your family and friends. HP Leadership, Council, Organizations and Nonprofits, continue your dedication to our mission and working hard to help our city. We appreciate it. I appreciate it. Accomplishing, um, and accomplishing the planning and the continued growth of Highland Park. I wish you all a Merry Christmas, happy holidays and the happiest of New Years. Thank you.
Hello, Highland Park. I love you. Uh, upon the fact of not being at the last meeting, but my granddaughter was in Cincinnati in the hospital. And I thank everybody for their prayers. And I want everybody to be safe. Please be mindful of your surroundings. And I just wanted to tell y'all, I love y'all.
Thank you very much. Forgive me, one of my children was trying to call me. Uh, my oldest memory of the city of Highland Park, I moved here in October of the year 2000. And in May, I was out running. I used to run the plant and I got to Oakland and down the street where kids lined up in the van and they were the Buffalo Soldiers. This was 2001. And I stopped those people and I talked to them and they told me they were lining up for the parade. So one of my, begin, this is before I had kids. It was just me and my dog out there running. And so I, I, I run, I, I'm seeing all of these people. It went from Tennyson, California, all the way back up to Oakland. And so I remember my wife and I walking over to see it for the first time. And I have memories of Highland Park because I was supposed to grow up over there on Colorado, 94 Colorado. My parents lived at the house in 1976. They got divorced and then we didn't move there. So I, I was supposed to be a Highland Parker. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that I didn't grow up there. But my oldest memories of the city were of that parade. And I have to, we've had conversations offline. I'm extremely proud of your dedication to say that I know you. Like this is somebody who is, you are dedicated to your cause and it's very rare that you find somebody who dedicates himself to a cause. This is totally outside of you and you do this every year. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm proud to say, hey, they still do that parade thing, man, and they still do a tree lighting. I mean, it's still, to me, it's still a big, no matter what the size of it is. So thank you for your consistency and your commitment. And when, as you were talking, I started to think about the first time I saw the parade. This was like, I'm, I was a new Highland Parker. And it made me feel like I lived in a community. So that has some effect on me as well. Um, I was born on a winter solstice, so after December 1st, y'all probably don't see me outside. So it's just normal. My family will tell you, you're not gonna see me until after the new year. Um, we have two years left. So like a marathon runner, we're at the halfway mark. We're right there. And most people quit at the 18th mile. That's at the third, will be the third quarter. Most people quit right there, but you decide whether or not you're gonna push through or you're gonna quit between now and the end of next year. So nothing would please me more than to be standing in front of a new building, a new housing development, something new in Highland Park and cutting a ribbon. Nothing would please me more. So I'm hopeful that next year, we will have an opportunity to get that process started. It's gonna take a while. Is, it, it's gonna take a while for, for, even if we say yes today, we'll be here again at the end of the year seeing that thing come to fruition. I hope that we have that happen. Um, nothing would delight me more. And I will wish all of you a wonderful new year. Take some time off, spend some time with your family, regroup, meditate, do what you need to do. Let the people who love you know, the people that you love know how much you love them and vice versa. I wish you guys a wonderful holiday season and a very prosperous new year. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.